Good evening and welcome to the March 4th Commission Meeting for 2025. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, and if you please would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Toth?
Here.
Commissioner Crable?
Here.
Commissioner Minning?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Mayor Dr.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on, approval of regular and workshop agendas. We do not have a workshop agenda tonight, so approval of the regular agenda?
No objections.
But it's good?
Looks good.
Let's go ahead and...on the agenda, do we actually take a vote? Or just, we just ask?
If there's anything to change on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, if there's no changes, you just move forward.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, tonight, we do have an accreditation award, and I'd like for Chief Barkley to step forward.
She's sitting back in the audience, but Gabby, the accreditation manager, Gabby Foster, Gabby Foster. Yes. So, the accreditation process, which we started, our initial accreditation in 2021, is a very extensive process, which we are accredited by the Commission for Florida Accreditation, which is in the state of Flori- premier accreditation agencies for law enforcement agencies in the country. What we were really excited about, our first accreditation, that was a big deal, we got it done, and, but everybody says your next hardest or your most hardest accreditation is your first re-accreditation. What happens is, our first accreditation was for one year of proofs, the re-accreditation process is for three, so this covered from 2021 all the way until 2024. I'm happy to say, we absolutely knocked it out of the park during our re-accreditation, we had absolutely zero corrective actions and no issues at all found when they did the onsite assessment here in August, and that's significant. We were supposed to receive this award in Santa Bell Island in October, but our friend came to visit, and to visit, and visit, and the, interestingly enough, the Commission for Florida Accreditation was one of the first state agencies to reach out to us and say, "Do you need any help? How can we help you?" And we will push you on the agenda for St. Augustine in February. So, two weeks ago, my team, who is Gabby Foster and Captain Savarys, we went to St. Augustine and gladly accepted this re-accreditation, which is our re-accreditation for three years, and the process, any kind of accreditation process is difficult, but it, what it does for the agency and what it does for the community, it shows that we're using best practices and the best standards, and it covers everything from your facility to training and all of our policies and procedures, and when they come to give a re-accreditation, they tear you up from top to bottom. You can't just smooth them and say, "Yeah, we're doing that." They, they take all of your policies and procedures, and then they want proofs that you're doing things, and you're not just saying that you're doing it in the right, that you actually are doing it in the right way. So, I'm very proud to say we are re-accredited, and you want to hold that up?
For three years. Wow.
And due to the diligence and the excellence of the entire Treasure Island Police Department team, and it was also recognized during the meeting, what we have been through with the hurricane and our temporary facilities, and one of the chiefs who was on the board is one of the chiefs who came to visit us here, and he went upstairs and saw our temporary armory and our temporary property evidence thing, and said it was amazing that we're still carrying forth the accreditation standards for property evidence and all the storage of our equipment and operations, even though we went what we have been through in the temporary facility we're in, so it was a, a good achievement for the entire agency.
Thank you, fantastic. Let's go ahead and get a picture with the accreditation?
Certainly.
We're gonna move. Move out. Picture. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Morales-Nidal.
Thank you so much, Mayor. For the record, Rick Morales, PIO, Public Information Officer with the SBA, the Office of Disaster Assistance, thanks once again for the opportunity. I'm here today because it was extended, the deadline to apply with the SBA, that was requested by the state, the governor, and our agency approved, so of course, a lot of homeowners, renters, nonprofits, and businesses are still in need, but I'm glad, I feel better. I remember when I came here at the FEMA town hall, like four months ago, at the end of October, the mountains of debris, but everything looks better, but yeah, we are recovering. That's why we are here, working on the long-term recovery, so not only the people is applying because of the one-year deferment with zero percent interest rates, because that's one of the best benefits, the people are using all these funds, let's say for mitigation, they are combining different programs, like with FEMA and Florida, Elevate Florida, so they combine all of that for, say, to elevate the houses, so these programs for physical damages, that means on the infrastructure, real estate inventory, walls, floor of the houses, nonprofits and businesses, the people are using that to elevate, combining FEMA and the program from the state, that's very important to know, and also, the people is also applying the constituents for economic damages, losses on profits, on businesses and nonprofits. I have been meeting and participating in a lot of activities, networking activities and events with Barry, the president of the Pinellas Chamber of Commerce, Madera Beach, and Treasure Island, so I have been engaging really well with them, great guy, and shout out to him from here, so the deadline right now is until April 27, so this Business Recovery Center to apply is still in, in the epicenter college, so it's the same address, Monday to Friday, close on Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Hey, all the people that didn't apply, complete the procedures, if you were denied, go there to, to ask why, you can go there to ask the status of your application for to appeal, to reconsider, to blow documents, take advantage of these centers, because these centers are not permanent, so we don't know if it's gonna be extended once again, because we have been here for more than, more than six months, I have been here since Debbie, so you know what I mean, so, so those centers might be closing, and we never know, if they don't have good numbers, they have to close, so I came here also, so you all can keep sharing the information to the constituents and for the people here, spread out that and disseminate that with your friends, family networking, that we are still here, we, we are still here, hey, take advantage of these funds, and yeah, we are an alternative to all the other programs like FEMA from the state, so yeah, we are gonna keep pushing and informing, and we are gonna stay here until the end, yeah.
And once again, where are you located?
Well, we, PIOs, we usually, we stay in hotels, because I'm from Puerto Rico.
Okay.
So, but the centers are in epicenters college, so that's where the people can apply, but the staff always, because we are from different parts of the United States or territories, we don't have an office, with the office is the field, the streets.
Okay.
So, but we stay in hotels, but my colleagues, the CSR's, customer service representatives, the people, the employees that help with the applications, they are there at the center, and also, it's very important to mention the, the phone number, eight hundred six five nine twenty-nine fifty-five, eight hundred six five nine twenty-nine fifty-five, that's the customer service center number with the SBA, and you can ask any questions there, and also, I left some flyers on the table outside, and I, I provided to you all, and Mayor, I'm gonna share more information with you, the fact sheets with all the details
Okay.
On PDF, English and Spanish flyers, everything, so you can have more information, I know that you have everything, but I would like to give more.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. And next, Brandy Long?
Hi, I'm Brandy Long, Sunshine Beach, I'm in a way better mood tonight. I want to thank everyone involved putting the new policies and procedures in place so that the permitting has rolled out, it has really made a difference, so everything new that has came on, the idea, obviously is working. I have one thing that I want to kind of put out there and find out if there's a plan for, the walkovers on Sunshine Beach are all still destroyed, and was wondering if there's a plan in place or a contract in place, or like a plan for when that's gonna start for repairs, and maybe a finish date or something, but that's all I have, thank you.
Great. Let's see here. Commissioner Reports, the first one we'll do tonight is our City Manager Chuck Anderson, and...
Sure thing.
And could you answer her question about the walkovers?
Sure. Ms. Long, it is one of the top five projects that the Commission did prioritize last year when they were asked to go through and prioritize the projects. Public Works is currently working on an RFP/RFQ to go out to have all of the Dune walkovers, and I think there's about 22 of them all together across the city, have those repaired. The timeframe right now, we don't have, but at the same time, we're also looking for reimbursement to have that done through the FEMA 1206, or excuse me, the FEMA Public Assistance Program, so it is on our radar, and we are taking a look at it, but I don't have a definitive timeline I could give you yet. Thanks. Mayor Commissioners, if I could, I'll just try to go quickly through the City, City Manager Report. Over in Economic Development, Joan Goodrich, our Director there, attended the Pinellas County Infrastructure Recovery Support and the Tampa Bay Regional Planning County Post Storm Recovery Meetings. There's a short timeline, but Director Goodrich is going to be taking the lead to submit several economic recovery and resiliency project funding requests by tomorrow to the Federal Economic Development Administration. Over in Public Works, we're going to be closing the Baskill Bridge on Tuesday, March 11th, from 10:00 p.m. at night to Wednesday, March 12th at 0600. The closure is needed to remove one of the hydraulic bridge pistons that will be out for rehabilitation. The bridge will remain operational without the piston, which will be replaced again when the rehabilitation is completed. Public Works also wanted to pass on their facilitating a request from Duke Energy for an easement on city property to relocate a transformer on 107th Street. Finally, Public Works was also able to confirm that the demo of the old City Hall building and the Public Works Administration building should begin late next week or early the following week, we do have the contractor, I'm just working on a start date for that. Over in Fire, the police and fire chiefs are working with the city attorney to complete an RFQ for the public safety facility design and engineering. Options are being pursued for a more cost-effective temporary fire and police facilities, and they're being researched, including a potential renovation of the community center and a potential renov-, excuse me, relocation to 108th Street and, and existing or other temporary Chief Bars is completing, or excuse me, is compiling an after-action report related to our hurricane-storm responses. There will be ongoing staff training on lessons learned, and the comprehensive emergency management plan update will begin in March. Over in Operations, fire rescue responded to 26 calls this week, 18 were in Treasure Island, and one was a water rescue. Safe sitter classes are back, Treasure Island Fire Rescue is hosting safe sitter classes for students in grades six through eight. These classes teach essential safety skills for staying home alone, watching younger siblings, and babysitting. The instructor-led courses include fun games and role-playing exercises to make engaging and interactive learning. For dates and details, please contact Fire at seven-two-seven-five-four-seven-four-five-seventy-five and extension two-sixty. Over in Police, Treasure Island Police Officers and Communication Staff created 659 records in CAD. in CAD between Friday, February 21st and Friday, February 28th. These incidents all included calls for service, as well as self-generated patrol activity. Two derelict vessels were also removed from TR Waterways this last week from the Florida, State of Florida Post-Hurricane Program. The STEP program, selective, excuse me, a selected traffic enforcement program resulted in 19 traffic citations and 45 written warnings during this reporting period. In Park and Rec, they asked me to pass on that the John Maroney Memorial Dog Park at Roselli Park is open. Sod was laid down on the ground, and there's mulch on order. Thank you is put on and passed on to our community for their patience, as Park and Rec worked to keep the garden green and beautiful for the furry friends. On March 8th and 9th, Treasure Island Beach will come alive with the sights and sounds of the Back to the Beach, Sand and Kites, and Coastal Delights event presented by Visit St. Pete Clearwater. This sand sensational festival brings together two fun beach attractions, sand sculptures, and dazzling kites. Visitors will be able to marvel at giant sand sculptures symbolizing Treasure Island's resilience, watch the sky full of colorful kites, and enjoy a weekend packed with live music, delicious food trucks, and unique local vendors. Whether you're a beach lover, a music fan, or just looking for the perfect weekend escape, this festival has something for everyone. Community Development asked me to pass on that they are still working hard and diligent at processing permits. In case anyone had not seen, we have received now 2,463 permits, up from last week's numbers. We have issued 1,887 permits, and that is 160 more permits from the week prior. In the review for permits, our numbers have dropped from 59 to 46. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Community Development Department, staff, other city staff that is supporting them, and the outside assistants, who are focused on returning people to their homes and businesses. In January, this team took a look at their existing processes, tweaked or eliminated redundancies, and introduced new methods to help residents and business owners. Since January 6th, this has resulted in an average of 157 permits issued on a weekly basis. Before they took this measure, they were averaging 69 permits a week. So, there's more than 100 permits per week now that are being issued because of this. So, thank you to them. FEMA visited Treasure Island on February 19th to introduce a new floodplain management crew leader, Katie Rand. While they were here, they reviewed the city's current permitting processes and stated that they found no potential program deficiencies that would impact our resilient and compliant storm recovery. So, that was good news, besides getting to meet the new person to hear that. Finance asked to pass on that they're working with Tyler Technologies, and they've taken a sample batch of invoices to test the transaction flow between community development and financial management. Once we know the results of these tests, we will be able to have a better idea when we can begin issuing refunds. Mike Howard, our finance director and our economic director, met with Mike Twitty, the Pinellas County Property Appraiser, to determine the potential impacts to last year's hurricanes that they could have on our tax base and our tax revenues in the future years. The disaster communities the county team is studying include Lead and Charlotte Counties, and when complete, we'll be bringing this information back to the commission. The 2024 audit is on track through CLA. In the process of updating our debt threshold model for later presentation to the commission, we are looking and taking a look at what that model will entail based upon our assessed value. The model will determine the level of debt that the city can sustain within the parameters of the city charter. We should have that information in about a week total, and we'll be bringing that back to the commission. Over in Administration, Treasure Island was very expedient in submitting its claim for debris costs to FEMA in the amount of $1.43 million. FEMA Public Assistance Grants are given numbers in consecutive, starting at 1. Treasure Island, excuse me, Treasure Island's debris grant was assigned number 34, and these grants go into the number of thousands. So, thank you to the individuals, both from the state and locally in finance, and the departments who put that forward. Florida is enhancing its storm preparedness with a new program called Elevate Florida, which is the state's first-ever statewide residential mitigation program led by the Florida Department of Emergency Management. This innovative program is designed to protect homes and communities by reducing damage caused by natural disasters such as hurricanes and floods. The state is hosting three information sessions in Pinellas County, with the City of Treasure Island hosting one on Wednesday, March 12th, on the fifth floor, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. These events will discuss eligibility requirements, type of projects available, and provide one-on-one onsite help for individual applications. As of yesterday afternoon at 5:00 o'clock, 199 applications had been submitted from the citizens of Treasure Island for elevation requests and mitigation reconstruction help. County Commissioner Kathleen Peters was able to visit with our Rebuild TI Working Group last week and provide an update on the county's recovery and rebuilding priorities for the $813 million in HUD funding that the county had received. An action plan needs to be developed by May of 2025, and a focus, one of the focuses will be on residential rebuilding and helping people directly affected, which are top county priorities. The city received several online inquiries having to do with city vehicles operating and driving around community neighborhoods. These vehicles are white and black in nature, with some apparatus on the outside, and they are not return-to-the-future-type cars or anything like that. What they are, are their parking enforcement and code enforcement cars. They've doubled up on some of the training opportunities, and they're taking people from code enforcement and putting them with parking enforcement to get a familiarization with the city, and they're driving around. So, if anybody sees any of these cars, that's all they are, is just code enforcement and parking enforcement. And last, as a final reminder, the municipal election will take place on March 11th, next Tuesday. With the community center still undergoing repairs, this year's polling place will be the City Commission Chambers, right here at City Hall. Please note that this is next Tuesday, March 11th, and due to that, the Community Development Department will be closed to the public, so that we can facilitate the election. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Taft.
Mayor, I'm sorry, did you want me to give my report now, or later?
I'll do it after we finish.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for attending tonight. I just wanted to say there's some upcoming events with the Gulf Beaches Public Library. We will be having a special ribbon cutting to welcome our neighbors back to the library and see what the library has new to offer, and also to show off our new reremodel of the library. Thank you to Helene. Right now, we don't have a date that's set. And then, secondly, in library business, I'd like to announce that our proposed budget was developed and approved by the trustees last night. And with careful consideration and impacts to our communities, we've been able to keep the budget flat, which means no increases this year for our city, and we will be submitted by the librarian as per our inter-local agreement to our respective city shareholders. And then, I'd like to also welcome back, I've noticed that we have a plethora of different out-of-state plates driving around. Traffic's gotten a little heavier, which is a good thing, which means that we've got some tourists and visitors coming to our businesses, and congratulations to our businesses that have recently reopened, especially Foxy's of Floridian, Ricky T's, Caddy's, I can't, really don't want to run down the list, but there's a bunch of them, support our local businesses. And then, I'd like to shout out to Kathleen Peters, thank you for traveling to Washington, DC, to work on supporting and securing support for our beach renourishment. And I look forward to seeing everyone this weekend out on the Back to the Beach event. And I was gonna make a comment about our code enforcement vehicles, but our city manager covered that nicely. And then, also, thank you to Parks and Rec for the dog park re-sodding. It looks really nice. I drove by today and had time to look, and the dogs are out there already enjoying themselves, along with seeing the people back, talking to each other. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crable?
Yes. I'd like to thank everybody, all the community that came out and supported the Fireman's Chili Cook-Off. It was a great success. Matter of fact, we had to turn people away, we outsold, we had more requests for tickets than we had tickets available. So, I think that's great, and I see two winners out in the audience, and that's Kathy and Chris, one on the chili and stuff, so congratulations to both of you guys. At that event, Inspired Acres was out here and trying to promote a little bit about their organization, and their organization's for transforming lives through therapeutic recreation. This is for children, it's for veterans, it's for first responders. So, please take a look at their website. This is something that can be of benefit for the whole community. And they have, it's inspiredacresflorida.org, or they're also on Facebook. So, this is a good opportunity to take a look at some items that way. And the other thing is that the veterans and first responders, when they're participants, there is no charge for them. So, that's a great thing for the first responders and the veterans. Now, I've been really kind of sitting back on our financials. I'm not saying there's a problem or anything, but I do think we need to be watching our financial picture much closer. When you get into crisis mode, there are things that can slip through the cracks. And I want to make sure that we can stay on top of the balances of different funding. So, I would like to see, and not everybody's in agreement with this, but like, for our different funds, like, we're gonna see a little bit later tonight, the general fund income, and then the expenses, just that quick one-pager, so we can see how that is going. And this is going to be especially important, that we need to track when we start reimbursing our refunds for our building permits, so that we can see how that's affecting that building fund, and how we are progressing down through on getting those refunds once those start, and how much further we have to go. And knowing that we're having less tax revenue coming in from property taxes, that's why I want us to look at these funds more frequently than quarterly, in a big overview. But quarterly, I would like to see that any of our contracts that are open-ended and stuff, that those be reviewed on if we've had any calls against it, so an open-ended contract being ones that we have for on-call, and we have an analysis of that. That makes things much clearer to our residents and to this commission on exactly how those contracts are going. So, I really think it's very important that we have that information out and have those by category, because like, one of the contracts we approved last week, we had different categories for different wages, from highly-level professionals all the way down to laborers. Well, if we have that categorized in different methods, that can help us also negotiate other contracts, or find out how we might be able to break those out. So, I think we have some hidden opportunities there to help our finances by looking at some of these contracts and stuff. I just think, because of the hurricanes and all of that, that we really should be looking at our financials more frequently. And if we're not looking at them, we could end up running into a problem. I'm not saying that there is one, or there's going to be one, but we're gonna have to curtail things, knowing that we're having less revenues, and what's going to happen with the building fund. So, I just want that to be brought to light. I want to thank Deb and Bob for all of their dedication to the city over the years. Bob, I'm gonna do a special one to you, because you've been the mayor and the commissioner. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Deb, thank you for your service. You guys have put in a lot of hours for this community, and I appreciate it. I can remember when you were mayor, Bob, so that takes us back a little bit.
Wasn't that long ago.
With that said, since I'm thanking them, I also want to thank all of the city employees. They have worked endlessly and in different areas of expertise than what they were trained and hired for. And in view of that, I want to earmark $500 of my discretionary fund as District 2 Commissioner to some type of reception or bludgeon to the employees, and I challenge my peers up on this dais to do the same. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Minning?
Well, let me start off by saying that you can have my 500. That'd be a great event for us, for city staff, who have really busted their, you know what, to keep this down going through some times that we'd never been through before, and I hope that we never go through again. So, keep your fingers crossed. One thing to mention is that from here, henceforth, I guess it was February 27th was the last time for mail-in ballots. So, that ship has sailed, and for those of you watching on TV or here, everything else now has to be done in purpose. If you're waiting around for a mail-in ballot, folks, it's not gonna show up. They did away with all the previously mail-in ballot registrations, and if you want one now, you gotta reapply, so, just an FYI. On Paradise Island, it's interesting to see which house is getting torn down next, because it seems like it's a new one every day. A lot of homes are being raised, and it's nice to see the piles are being driven, which tells me that new homes are gonna be built. But it truly is a sign of the time, and I'm sure Paradise Island isn't the only one where homes are being raised and new homes will be built. But as Commissioner Crable mentioned, a vacant lot isn't bringing in a lot of tax revenue to the city, so we need to be cognizant of that as we go forward into the future. And I want to say that it's been a privilege and a pleasure, serving as a commissioner here for a fill-in spot. I said I wasn't gonna run, I'm not. Arthur Sazan is gonna be sitting here next, and I wish him the best, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickey?
I wanted to add a little bit to what the city manager talked about on the progress we've been making in terms of getting permits issued. He'd mentioned earlier that we, as of yesterday, 1,887 permits had gone out. So, the total amount of approved permits up to this date through, going back to the beginning of the two hurricanes, is we've got 78.5% of the permits out that have been applied for. In addition to that, if you adjust for the voided, we have 156 voided permits, people who applied for permits and, for whatever reason, changed their mind, or modified them, or took them off the table. So, if you adjust those out of the total permit applications, we're really up to about 84% of all the permit applications that have been applied for since the beginning of the hurricanes have been approved. So, that's a pretty good number, and the city manager had mentioned about some of the changes that had been made, including, I even just heard Brandy talk about some of those too, and it's made a big, it's made a big difference. So, I'd like to, again, thank the staff, you've heard that from other commissioners and from the city manager, both the work that's happened in the past several weeks has been absolutely incredible. Especially, I want to thank the deputy fire chief, Tom Brennan, for his leadership in reorganizing and streamlining the permit process. Having said that, I wanted to end by saying, public acknowledging the volunteers that helped out for four months. 16 weeks, we had the volunteers that came in, and if I could, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and read their names, because I think they deserve this acknowledgement and credit.
Please do.
Thank you. Donna Dickey, Joan Leaks, Heidi Horick, Commissioner Diana Crable, and I apologize, I don't know this one's last name, but we call her Cindy from Indy. She spent a lot of time here. She's a seasonal resident, but she came in here and helped out many, many consecutive Tuesdays and Thursdays. Steve Rybold, Lisa Gray, Jennifer Gray... Steve Rybold, Lisa Gray, Jennifer Gray, Lexus Stolen, Chris Hawkins, and Nancy Bostic. So thank you very much for, for the work that you did. Things were so smooth last week that we pretty much decided that we could abandon the volunteer effort. So today was the first day in 16, 17 weeks where we didn't need the volunteers. So again, I wanted to thank them, but also thank the staff and, and deputy fire chief Tom Brennan for, for the great progress. That's all.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Sure. I just wanted to make the commission aware that, I don't know if you participate in the Florida League of Cities Monday morning calls, but they have Monday morning calls that are open to any elected official, and you can listen to the legislation. They go over, I want to say like the top 20 bills affecting local government every morning. There are a lot of bills that have been filed that are, that could greatly affect local government, including the city of Treasure Island. At this point, very early, there's a lot of session left. You're going to see a lot of movement, but I encourage each of you to dial in, to be aware of what those bills are, and then as they go along, we may need your assistance or the assistance of the citizens in voicing the concerns if it'll affect the city of Treasure
Thank you. Well, we've been going now for about 20 minutes. I don't know that there's a whole lot to say, but I'll say it anyhow. The Florida League of Cities also is going to be hosting it March 24th through the 26th up in Tallahassee, and we're going to be looking over the legislation. So there are the opportunities for the city commissioners to attend one, and that there's a second meeting going on at the same time up there, which is for the mayor and the vice mayor. And so we'll be looking forward to attending that as well. Couple of things. I think that we've said, you know, about how everything is beginning to open up again, and I just have a couple of comments on that, is that yes, it's, it's very exciting that our businesses are back open, our residents are, are back. But as commissioners or city employees, if you would, when you go into some of the restaurants and that, that are newly opened, and thank them, and then let them know, especially commissioners, let them know because they, they take a lot of pride in that. I think that the, the best opportunity to, to express what we can do here in the city is what we did with Ricky Tees on Friday night. Literally, there were hundreds and hundreds, and I wouldn't be surprised if the number had even reached maybe 1,000. It's unbelievable how it was done. And I want to thank not, not only Ricky Tees, but also our police department. I had mentioned the other day to, to our city manager that we're very proud of the well-placed police officers for the event. They were not real visible, but they definitely were ready if anything were to, to happen. And, and I think that everybody just had a great time. I don't think that there was one incident that took place that the police had to respond to or anything, even with that large crowd. So I think that it was just great. But thanking these folks, that a lot of them, they're still, Ricky Tees is only operating three days a week, and Krabby's, or not Krabby's, Caddy's is going to begin operating yet this week, they hope to operate, and hopefully they'll be able to get down there. So I, I really appreciate that. And I too, Commissioner Toth and Commissioner Minning, thank you very much for your service. And it's a long, a lot of long hours, and I'll try to make it shorter tonight than what our average meeting has been, which has been about two and a half hours. So, and, and that's, so I'll say, thank you for all being here and for your patience, and let's just continue to get back to normalcy. And, and unfortunately, about the same time we're going to get a lot of the normalcy, we will have the next hurricane season beginning. So that's all I'll say. So thank you very much, and, and let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda.
We have three topics on the consent agenda. I'd like to read out what those are very quickly here. It's, the first one is an amendment to the contract for the annual run for the beach 5K run. The second item is renewing the hold harmless agreement with the city of Clearwater Fire Rescue Training Facility. And the third is a memorandum agreement within the state of Florida to assist with federal immigration enforcement actions. Having said that, I move to approve the three items on the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Is there any public discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and have the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Commissioner Crable?
Aye.
Commissioner Minning?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you. And moving to the items of business, our first is to request approval for the ordinance 2025-01, creating a temporarily expanded timeframe for special events.
Ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance of the city of Treasure Island, Florida, amending Chapter 68 zoning regulations of the city of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances by amending Section 68-51 Special Event Permit to allow for certain extended special events for a limited time in the aftermath of Hurricanes Helene and Milton, so that businesses may begin temporary operations, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is the second reading of this ordinance, you heard it on the 18th. Essentially, it is, if you recall, it's the extending the special events. We only allow it for nine days, so this gives them an opportunity to apply for six months with two extensions. Basically, it gives them an opportunity to, to run while they're building their primary business. There's been no changes since the first reading, so if you have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Public comment? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on. We have a motion, please.
Yes. I move to approve ordinance 2025-01 to expand the timeframe associated with certain special events.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? No? Okay. Please, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Commissioner Crable?
Aye.
Commissioner Minning?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item, first hearing of ordinance 2025-02, amending fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to recognize insurance proceedings of $483,762.59 for floor damages.
Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance of the city of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to recognize insurance proceeds of $483,762.59 for flood damages, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
All right. Do we have any staff?
Thank you. Pretty well speaks for itself. In Sep, in September, we had, you know, the storms and everything. We immediately filed, started filing for insurance. We did get this $483,000 for flood insurance, and it was for about four different, different uses that are detailed in here, contents, building, and the like. And the purpose of this is for us to actually, now that we have those funds, to be able to utilize those funds against the damages that were incurred.
Great, thank you. Does anyone here have questions for the staff?
Are we expecting additional insurance payments from an additional insurance company?
Yeah. Yeah. That's accounting talk.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Is there any public comments? Okay, seeing no public comments. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, I think I need to make the motion.
I'm sorry, you got to make the motion.
Okay. I, I move to approve ordinance number 2025-02 at the first, as the first public hearing, and to schedule it for second and final reading at the March 18th, 2025 Regular Commission Meeting.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Commissioner Crable?
Aye.
Commissioner Minning?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Once again, unanimous, motion carries. Okay, going on to the next. Authorization to city manager to approve the purchase order to Johnson Brothers Corporation to pull and install one hydraulic cylinder for the bascule bridge in the amount of $42,601.91.
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. The city of Treasure Island has a bascule bridge, as you probably have noticed, and there since 2007. That bridge has 16 cylinders on it and four leaves. That means there's four cylinders per leaf. Back in July, one of the cylinders started leaking, and what happens is you have a telltale drain, and if it goes past the one ring, oil ring, then a telltale drain starts to collect. So we monitored it that way. We did a couple test openings, see if it would stop. And it did slow down for a little bit, but back in October, it started to, to develop a more persistent leak. So we started looking at what ways can we, can we extend the life of it a little bit. Found out that really the, the seals are pretty much blown on that one cylinder. So we got two contractors, one of them's Johnson Brothers, the other is our hydraulic company, I can't remember the name of them. They're going to come out on March 11th at 10:00 PM, shut down the bridge, pull one of the cylinders out, put the bridge back together so that we can still operate it. You can still operate it with one cylinder out, because we have two on each, two for the opening, two for the closing. So as long as you have one of those out, you can still operate the bridge. Sometime in April, we'll put the, the other cylinder back, we just do not have a date at this time. We probably want to get it sometime after April, so we miss the, the April, the spring break. Any questions?
Is that a rebuilt cylinder, or is that a new one that has failed?
Well, all, as you remember, Bob, back when you were the mayor, we pulled all 16 of them, because one of them had, one of them basically had a design flaw. So as a new bridge, we decided that, at that time, to replace all of them. So this is one of the ones that was replaced, and the, the seals are blown on it. About every 20 years, you're going to have to replace the seals, so I expect over the next five years for us to have replaced every single one of those seals again.
Any indication for the others?
None. None at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the city commission approve the authorization of a purchase order to Johnson Brothers Corporation to pull and install one hydraulic cylinder for the bascule bridge in the total amount of $42,601.91.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Commissioner Crable?
Aye.
Commissioner Minning?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Once again, motion carries unanimously. Okay, our last item for this evening is the selection of the city clerk candidate.
Hi, how is everyone today?
Great.
All right. So I know I'm last up. What I want to do is just quickly walk through the process that we went through trying to find the city clerk candidates, so that way everyone is familiar with how we ran interviews and that type of thing. So we received, we received quite a few applications. There were two specifically that stood out to us that we wanted to offer an interview. So on Friday, last Friday, the 28th, we did do those interviews with two candidates, Lisa Marie Kennedy and Cassandra Kilgore. So what we did was, we had formal interviews. The people who sat in on those interviews were me, the city manager, and Mary Ellen Edwards, our Assistant Community Development Director. And we asked, you know, just a series of formal questions, as you would normally in an interview process, about their background and leadership capabilities and that type of thing. And then in the afternoon, we invited you all to come and do an individual, more informal, just conversation with both candidates, just to get to know them better. So with that, with that information, then I also provided you with some salary comps from surrounding areas. The one thing that I want to point out, though, about those salaries is that they don't take into consideration any sort of longevity, how long the person's been in that role, whether or not they're new, how long they've been with the city in general, if they were promoted up. These are just straight salary numbers. So I just wanted to, you know, just to kind of take that into consideration. The other thing that I wanted to point out, in those city clerk comps, when it says that the ranges are under review, I believe that they might be going through a comp study, and usually at that time, the ranges will come up. So that's been historically what happens, ranges rarely go down, they usually come up. So, so just something to, to look at. Where ranges are not provided, then those are usually just set by commission, and that is the number that they came to. So there was really no specific range. So that was the entire process. We, like I said, we've got the two candidates. Just really quickly, Lisa Marie Kennedy, I'll just give a little bit of background for the people in the audience. She would be coming to us from Hillsborough County Clerk of Circuit Court. She's currently the Director of Official Records and Tax Deed Sales. She comes with a very, very strong background in public records, as well as a very, very busy organization. So she was also the Recording Secretary for the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, or Hillsbor, Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners. There we go, that was a mouthful. Cassandra Kilgore is coming out of the city of Lake Mary, where she's currently the Deputy City Clerk. She has also moved up into that role, where at one point she was also the Deputy Clerk II for the Fifth District Court of Appeal. So she has that city clerk background as well. So I just wanted to point out those few things. At this point, I would like, you know, if you all would just take into consideration, you can discuss from the dais, who and which candidate you would like to move forward with in the process, and then who would like to be the primary point of contact for salary negotiations, and then I would assist with that as we move forward.
Great, thank you. I would like to, to basically point out that we had two great candidates, she just gave kind of their backgrounds. Both are very qualified. I was very pleased to see the quality of candidates, and it's the, basically, we can move forward. Who wants to start?
We're going to let...
We're going to let the guys start? We'll start with Commissioner Minning.
I agree with, with the mayor that we did have two very, very well-qualified candidates. And that's always a tough job, when you boil it all down, and then you got to choose one. And so it's not an easy task, but I thought that there was a reasonable differentiation between the two of them, and I thought that Lisa Marie Kennedy was the, the one on top. So nothing to do with, no disparaging remarks to the other candidate, but I think she was the better one.
Commissioner Dickey?
I'm just going to repeat what you've heard twice already, and that's that both candidates were, were excellent, both were qualified. I felt that regardless of which one we went with, we would, we'd have a good city clerk that we'd be working with. Having said that, I, I considered back the background, the level of experience, familiarity with Treasure Island, and Lisa Marie Kennedy came out on the top of, of the two choices we had.
Commissioner Toth?
Yes. Again, concur that they both were very strong candidates, and thank you for making our job a little difficult here, but both of them are very, very talented ladies. I also would concur with Lisa Marie Kennedy with her familiarity with our area and the beach environment and her background in the busy department. Thank you.
Commissioner Crable?
I was not at the interviews, so, but from looking at the resumes and what stood out to me was a little more professionalism from Lisa Marie, and I really liked what she had for when she had to stand up for an ethical issue.
Great, thank you. And I am, it's unanimous. I, I think that we have a great candidate here, and she's in the audience. the audience. So, where do you want to go from here?
Okay. So, at this point, it's completely up to you if you want to talk a little bit about where maybe everyone stands regarding salary, and then, like I said, you'll appoint one person to work with me directly, to work with Lisa Marie regarding any sort of salary negotiations and moving forward.
Okay.
I would prefer that we appoint one of us to work with the, work with Jessica and the city manager to negotiate the contract, including the salary in that discussion.
Yep. I know that you're working with the committee, with Chuck.
Right.
I would be more than happy to sit on that committee, or not committee, but working with the three of us. So if that's fine with everyone?
Absolutely.
I bet it.
All right. So let's talk a little bit about the salary, then, just so that we have a ballpark figure. And I'll start off. I see it being $105,000 as a number that we'd like to work with, but we'll continue to work forward. Any other thoughts?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm looking at the St. Pete Beach and Madera Beach salaries that are shown here, and I think we need to come right into that ballpark.
Great.
Thank you.
I would add that our previous, Celine Kidwell, was at 90?
92.
92? So we're giving a little jump here. If we're going to go with 105, or in that ballpark, I would like to note that there should be a condition in there, and that condition should be that she obtains her city clerk certification within, I don't know, whatever time seems reasonable, but...
Okay. We can definitely do some research on that to see how long the process normally is. And then also, just to point out as well, and I'm not arguing the 105 or anything, Celine was at 92, her predecessor was somewhere in, like around like 76.
Yeah.
So you can see that kind of escalation up a little bit. It's pretty normal, so.
Okay. Any thoughts?
We'll leave that up to you and Jessica and the city manager to negotiate.
Great. So I think that our decision is unanimous, and we'll be working with Lisa Marie and yourself and Jen.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Okay, we do not have anything else tonight, so this meeting is now adjourned.